All right. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 21st. And we'll start with a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Spears.
President.
Hesner.
Here.
Commissioner Pascal.
Here.
Commissioner Farman Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Buckles.
Here.
Vice Chair Goldstein.
Here.
And Chair Desai.
Here. Move on to the agenda, approval of the agenda for tonight.
I'll move. Approval?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now on to approval of the minutes of August 7th, 2014.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Audience comments. So at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes your participation and input. When addressing the Planning Commission, please begin by stating your name and address for the record. And limit your comments to no more than four minutes in order to provide for an orderly All right. Seeing no takers, we will close audience comments at this time and move on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And the first item, tentative parcel map 1305.
And we'll have Derek Purification present the report.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. The project for 75 North Cannon, due to the current moratorium and the effect it has on their proposed project, the applicant has decided to withdraw their application. So there is not a report to present or a presentation. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer them. If not, that's about it.
I have one question.
Sure.
This lot was being put in on an alleyway that at one point I measured only 11 feet wide. Is there any, was there any negotiation with the applicant as to at least making that access road big enough to get an ambulance down or a city truck?
Yeah. They were working with a fire department to widen it and with Public Works.
Okay. Because it didn't show on, it didn't show on any of the maps. But you know, in the future, I'm sure it's going to rain sometime and the applicant's going to want to come back and redo this. So you know, I think we should ask the applicant to at least make the access to the property up to the rest of the city standards.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Derek.
All right. We'll move on to the second item, conditional use permit 1401.
And Letitia Cardoso, Senior Planner, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Chair Desai and Commissioners. The next item is conditional use permit 1401, which is a request to construct a new 4,400 square foot, one-story, single-family residence on property located at 2235 Santa Anita Avenue. As you recall, at the meeting on July 2nd, the Planning Commission continued this item to August 21st to give the applicant time to revise the design to address your concerns from the last meeting. The applicant, Max Anita LLC, has submitted a written request, and that was attached to your report, to withdraw the conditional use permit application as they will reduce the total square footage of the residence and garage to 4,000 square feet or less. And so this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Do we have anything for Letitia? Yes? No? All right. I think we're good. Thank you, Letitia. Okay. Moving right along. Hillside development permit 1201 and conditional use permit 1208, 610 Baldwin Court.
We are back to Derek Purification, who will make the presentation and a PowerPoint.
I'll be stepping out because I have a conflict, obviously, with my residence. And if I come step back in, it's only because I'm looking for a place to try to watch it on a screen or on TV.
I'll be back for the final event.
All right. Thank you.
The project that's before you is hillside development permit 1201 and conditional use permit 1208 for the address at 610 Baldwin Court, also known as Lot 24. Just a little bit of background on this project. It was originally seen at the Planning Commission on March 7th. It went through several meetings to address mass.
2014 or 2012?
I'm sorry?
March 7th, what year?
What year? Oh, 2013. I'm sorry. Yeah, March 7th, 2013. And it was continued to address lack of articulation, mass and bulk. And also, there was a retaining wall that was cutting into the category four slope. Again, it was seen several times up until June 6th meeting. At the June 6th meeting, the Planning Commission decided that the revisions that it went through from the previous meetings weren't sufficient enough and recommended denial. At the January 14th meeting, the applicant actually ended up appealing the Planning Commission's decision to the City Council. And the City Council, again, remanded the project back to Planning Commission to address scale, bulk and mass, which are all provided in the Stonegate Design Guidelines, D 1.1 through 1.9. The Planning Commission had a workshop on March 6th of 2014, and they provided the applicant to, they provided direction basically to further reduce scale, bulk and mass, and also consider subterranean square footage and move some of the second floor to the basement. We've provided the HMZ findings under Exhibit C on page eight, as well as the Design Guidelines, D 1.1 through 1.9, under Exhibit B. This is just a quick recap of their proposal for today. The square footage has been reduced to 3,264 square feet. There has been a reduction in the length of the second floor. The first floor, more or less, stays the same. There's been a little bit of reduction and a little relocation of powder room and a terrace room. And then they're also proposing a 1,349 square foot, fully subterranean basement. Some of the square footage from the second floor has been moved down to the basement area. They've done this to address bulk and mass issues, as well as a reconfiguration of the master bedroom and bathroom to create a second floor deck. Yes?
I apologize because I was not here. Was the basement part of the previous applications?
It was not. This would actually be the first time you'd be seeing the basement.
So what we're seeing, just to help me out, to make sure I'm correct here, we're seeing a reduction in the above-ground level of 268 square feet and put an addition below ground of 1,349?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just to note, pursuant to the HMZ, gross floor area does not include basements or other subterranean spaces.
Right.
The proposed lot coverage, this is actually a typo. It says that there was no change. There actually is a slight change. I think the proposed lot coverage is actually 2,317. So that was actually achieved by removing the terrace and kind of reconfiguration of the powder room. The proposed height is still the same. It hasn't changed. It's still 25 feet to the top of the ridge. As far as parking goes, there's no change in parking as well. At the time of the submittal of the application, the code required that there's only two covered parking spaces. If it were submitted today, it would have been required that they have three covered, but at the time of submittal, it's actually two. Here's the proposed site plan. Again, not too much has changed. Here, originally, there was a terrace that they ended up enclosing in order to reconfigure some things on the first floor. But other than that, the footprint is generally the same as the previous, as a previous Planning Commission meeting. It still has the proposed retaining walls, and there is a perimeter fence, it's a steel tubular fence that goes around the property. It does stop here at the rear retaining wall, though. Here's the first floor plan. And originally, there was a powder room here where the new porch is. Again, I had mentioned that the terrace has been enclosed. And there was, originally here where the powder room is, there was a butler's pantry. So little things here have kind of switched around and with the addition of the basement and the, go ahead and blank Danny, the light well. Thank you. With the addition of the light well to access the basement. On the second floor plan, this is where you'll see more of the change. The master bedroom, bathroom and walk-in closet have been flipped around to introduce this new second floor deck. A, the bedroom here in front originally was removed, as well as two bathrooms and a laundry room. So some of that square footage has actually ended up moving down to the basement floor plan. Here, they are including a den or another bedroom, storage, wine cellar, the laundry, as I mentioned. Bathroom is moved down and also a game room. And here you can see the proposed light well. Yes?
How many bedrooms were in the previous?
In the previous, it was.
Five.
It was total of five, right? Yeah.
One of the bedrooms just went down.
One of the bedrooms moved down, yes.
All right.
Here's the west elevation, which also faces Baldwin. Again, here's the addition of the second floor deck. And the east elevation. The south, this is what you'd be seeing going up north on Baldwin Court. And the north elevation, and this is where the proposed light well, this is almost like a section kind of showing how it would look. That pretty much concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I've got two questions.
Sure.
I thought, on the plans, it shows a six-foot-high retaining wall on the north side, I think.
Yes. I had that same thing.
I thought the retaining walls had to be limited to no more than three feet.
It's actually supposed to be terraced.
It is supposed to be terraced, but it doesn't show it that way in the plans.
Let me see.
As far as I can tell. Have we discussed this before?
Preliminary wall plan shows actually two six-foot-high fences that look like maybe they're six feet apart. One and two.
Yeah. Those actually should be, I believe they were actually, we ended up having them terrace it to fix the six-foot height. I think it's supposed to be, I believe it was three and three. They're actually supposed to be separated. That, I'm thinking, is actually a typo, but we can clarify that with the applicant.
Yeah. I mean, that's what it says on this. It says six-foot-high stucco finish retaining wall.
Are you looking on the civil?
This is on preliminary wall plan.
Preliminary wall plan at the top, tubular steel fence and then a six-foot-high stucco finish retaining wall.
Two and two.
Anyway, I would like to have that clarified.
Sure.
And corrected, because that's not allowed. My other question is about the grading.
Yes.
Is there a limit on grading in the hillside zone?
I'm sorry?
Is there a limit on the amount of grading they're allowed to do?
There's a limit on cut and fill. And, well, I shouldn't say there's a limitation, but what happens is that once you go over 2,000 cubic yards, there's additional findings that you have to make. In the original application, they were proposing 100 cubic yards, but with the new basement, we actually calculated, it's actually about 600 cubic yards.
600 cubic yards. So that, that's.
It's still under the 2,000 threshold to require additional findings. Any other questions?
Okay. I'd like to read something, if I may. I've been advised by staff that the attorney for steady developments has accused me of being biased against this project because of the number of bedrooms and bathrooms it has. Mr. McDonald bases his conclusions on statements I made as a member of the public at the July 24th City Council meeting, when the council was discussing the possibility of enacting a water or building moratorium due to the drought crisis we are in. My comments were entirely taken out of context. As a resident and current water customer myself, I remain concerned about maintaining serious water resources for existing customers, and it seems to me that the larger the development, the more water it's likely to use. Now that the city has a water and land use moratorium in place, the city can investigate whether that is true. If it is, the city can look at developing regulations to address that impact. None of this has anything to do with this project. This project already has its water hookups, so the moratorium does not apply. Also, any new regulations the city might develop will probably not apply to this project. As a planning commissioner, I review the evidence in the record in order to support the findings necessary to approve a project. This is my job here with this project, the same as I treat any other project. The number of bedrooms and bathrooms this project has is not relevant to whether or not I think I can make findings required to approve it. So I have no basis that would prevent me participating as a planning commissioner.
No worries.
Thank you.
Next.
All right. I think at this time, we'll open it up for a public comment on this item.
I think also.
Oh, the applicant.
The applicant has a, and they have a, they have a.
Do that presentation, okay.
Sorry.
Come on up.
And then, and then you can have a public comment.
Good evening. Richard McDonald, on behalf of the applicant. Adele Chang does have a presentation. She is unfortunately stuck in traffic after having some car trouble about an hour ago. So she will be here shortly if you want to, I don't want to delay things, which is why I wanted to come up and let you know that. I also, though, wanted to answer a couple of the questions that you were asking, just to make sure the record's clear. Number one is, my understanding is that the retaining wall on north side would be terraced to comply with the provision you were just discussing. Second, my understanding is that the fence along the southern border that is between this lot and the adjacent lot is shown on your map, but we actually, in discussions with John Hunt and some of the other neighbors, agreed to take it out. I think it's shown on your plan in the interest of just trying to keep some continuity as this thing changes. But we have had discussions with them and did agree to take it out. Third, the primary changes to the project are the ones that come out of the March 6th workshop. At that time, there was discussion about minimizing the massing on the second floor and towards the southern property line by going into a basement, which is what we've done. We have pulled back the second floor from the south property line. Originally, in our discussions with Mr. Hut, we pulled it back more. Then we had conversations with Ms. Schuster and some other neighbors, and they actually suggested maybe not pulling it back as much and instead putting in a deck. So we ended up actually liking the deck idea and have tried to sort of balance the master bedroom program with the deck idea, which is why it ends up where it ends up in terms of how it looks. That's why you see a deck up there, and that's why you see it massed the way that it is. Both Mr. Hut and some of the other neighbors had suggestions about additional window treatment facing towards the street. We're fine with that. If that's a condition of approval, that's not something that we object to. In terms of program layout, we'd probably have to make, we probably would put it where there's a stairwell. Oh, good. Good, good, good. Saved by the cavalry. So with, but I did want to sort of put this within the context of where we have been with this. Lastly, the square footage is 2,800 plus 400 for the garage. The settlement agreement provides for 4,100. So we're about 1,300 below what is considered the maximum allowable square footage, which is about a 30% less than what's provided for in those, in there. And then with regard to Derek's comment about, at the time the plans were submitted, only two-car garage was required, actually, under the terms of the settlement agreement, it's a two-car garage. So, and then lastly, Adele can discuss the size of the basement and how that works. A lot of that, and she's going to have to, because a lot of it has to do with how you get light in there, living space, accessibility to comply with building code and the like.
My name's Adele Chang with Lim Chang, Relling &amp; Associates, architects for the project. And I'm back here again before you. I am sorry I'm late. I thought we were number three on the agenda, and I thought getting here at 7:20 would be enough time, but apparently the other items went very quickly, so I apologize. I want to mention that this particular submittal has been reduced by approximately, I don't have my notes in front of me because, you know, I was rushing, approximately 580 square feet from the very first submittal and hearing made last March. And what we have before you is an outline from the second submittal, actually. The very first submittal actually had a footprint that came out to this line because it had a porch as well as the portcove share and so forth. So what you see in the red dotted line here and here is from our second submittal. And what we have now, what you see in the black outline, is what we have for our current submittal. You can see we have removed a bedroom and two bathrooms from the, a bedroom and two bathrooms from the last submittal. We also reduced the master suite and pushed everything this way after meeting with some of the community. And the overall square footage then is 268 square feet less than the last time you saw And here we are with our renderings again. To the left is before, the last time you saw it, and the after, and let me show it better to you in this version, before to the left and after to the right. And a better view, actually, is this one. The before over here with more second-story massing, and after over here with mostly a one-story mass, with the entire second story pushed back substantially. The only reason it's not completely flat across was just to have a little bit of articulation. So this is not, you know, it's just a two-foot jog here. And then the master bedroom was also reduced in size and pushed in that direction. And at the recommendation of some members of the community, we added a deck in this area to make it softer and so forth, so it's not kind of a flat wall. This is from the back, which is, and I think really this is the view that shows the best picture of what we've done.
Can I see the back again?
Pardon?
Could I see the back again?
Yes.
Thank you.
Here's the back. We didn't, we don't have a previous here. The previous submittal would see this plane much further in this direction, and then a roof here, a roof here. And then this massing that you see here was shifted in this direction. You'll be able to see it on the floor plans that you have as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. We have added a basement, and that was at the suggestion of the Planning Commission. It's not a full basement. We added only a partial basement. It's not taking the entire footprint, because there aren't really that many uses you can put into a basement that are still usable. I mean, obviously, you can say, put all the bedrooms down there, but would you really, you know, want to live, you know, off a basement? And would parents with young children really want all of them in the basement while they're upstairs? That type of thing. So we do have some spaces down there, but they are also not counted per the HMZ into livable area. Do you have any questions for me?
It's very close to being a full basement. I mean, the first floor is 1,500 square feet, and the basement is 1,300 square feet. It's not that much less than a full basement.
No. The first floor, when you think about it, is actually 2,000 square feet.
I'm reading off the plan here.
No. You should count the garage as part of the footprint because the overall square footage is counted with the garage. So to be fair, if you're going to count our overall size of the home with the garage, then it should be counted.
But on your conceptual floor plans, you put, you list the garage as a separate 420 square feet.
I'm just reading what it says on the plan.
Your first floor area is 1,596 square feet.
Yes. But the total area is 3,264. So the 420 of the garage should be added to the first floor area. We separate it out so that, you know, we know what's livable area and what's garage area. So to be fair, you should add 420 to 1,596 to get the entire first floor footprint.
And to be fair, this is a 4,613-square-foot house because it includes the square footage of the basement.
No.
To be fair, that is part of what you're selling, yes?
No. That's not what I'm selling. I'm saying footprint. We're talking about footprint, and the HMZ does not count.
It includes the subterranean level.
Does not include the subterranean level. The HMZ does not count that as livable area. And we did go to the basement at your suggestion. Any other questions?
Is there a gray water system?
There still is. We agreed to that at one point in one of the hearings, I think, at the hearing with the City Council, we agreed to do that, to capture gray water from, you know, laundry, et cetera, to use for irrigation.
Can we have any plans for the gray water system, though? I see nothing in here that's going to support. I hear you saying you're going to do it, but I don't see anything definite.
It's a design-build item, just like fire sprinklers are, even though they're required here. But it is a design-build item, and it's something that, you know, you can completely put into conditions or whatever you'd like, but it is a design-build item. We're not specialists in this type of thing. At some point, we'll find somebody who is, and maybe staff, building staff, or whoever. At some point, we'll find somebody who is, and maybe staff, building staff, or whoever can kind of monitor that.
My only comment on that, and I know it has... Water has absolutely nothing to do with this project, as I stated a few minutes ago. But it certainly might be able to push this project forward a little faster if you showed some compassion and you showed us how you were going to make the gray water system work on this project. I'm thinking that everybody in town's going, "Wait a minute, what's going on? How is this going to benefit the city?"
It would collect gray water from...
You could say what... I'm not... I don't want to hear the lecture on gray water. I'd kind of like to see the plan of it. How... Where are you going to put it? What is it going to be used for? Would it put it on paper so the rest of us and the rest of the city can see it? Whatever you say here, unless somebody goes back and looks at the record, they're not going to be able to see what that is. That's my only concern on it, okay?
Okay.
Could you elaborate on what's happening in the backyard? First off, what's the dimension from the back wall of the dwelling to that first planter wall? I think it's called out as 18-inch high.
It's a seat wall, really. It's really for...
Yeah.
It should be in your drawing.
Well, it's not legible in the plan that I'm looking at.
Oh. Okay.
12 feet?
Yes. There is, however, all of the hillside beyond it, and all this hasn't changed from day one.
Sure.
Pardon?
I said, "Sure."
Okay.
And are those just trees in the backyard? Maybe that's a tree that's right next to the corner of the back wall, or is... I don't know. Is that a jacuzzi, or... Looks like a rectangular shape.
There's no jacuzzi.
Okay.
What were you saying? Next to the walls?
Next to the porch.
Next to the porch? It's a proposed tree, yes.
Oh, okay. All righty. I was just trying to get an idea of the amount of turf and landscaping to be provided in the flat area.
I would say the vast majority of the area is not turf. There is a small amount of turf. And if the watering of turf is a concern, we can remove the turf and turn it all into ground cover or other drought-tolerant species.
Okay.
Which is also far retardant.
Okay. Thank you for the response.
Sure.
Adele, can you elaborate a little bit on why you chose to... And this doesn't have an impact necessarily on the square footage, but locating the laundry in the basement on the second floor?
Locating the laundry in the basement? We just wanted to eliminate or reduce the second-floor mass as much as possible. So that all that's up there now is the master bedroom and two secondary bedrooms, and then two bathrooms.
So, you're going to pump... You're going to have sump pumps for that laundry to get...
Well, any kind of storage tank will likely also be subterranean, and maybe it could be located at the basement level. And then it will be pumped up. It has to be pumped anyway in order to irrigate one way or another.
Do you have anything else for Adele? Thank you, Adele.
That's it? Okay. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll open up for public comments on this item.
Marguerite Schuster, Mount Wilson Trail. Good evening, Commissioners. First, I want to acknowledge the efforts the developers have made to respond to suggestions made to them, most particularly the deck, which makes a positive difference in the overall impact of the proposed house. I can feel the difference, the improvement, when standing in front of the story poles. I'm grateful for it. It's so far so good. I'm disappointed, however, that the response seems to take advantage of allowances made for below-grade development without anything like commensurate reductions of above-grade square footage, achieving which was the whole point of granting the below-grade space. It is understandable, of course, that the developers would want more below-grade space than they are giving up. I could understand, say, a ratio even of 2 to 1. A ratio of 5 to 1, however, feels to me a bit like extortion, setting an exceedingly bad precedent, and I hope that you will reject it. If they want the large basement, they need to make very much more substantial cuts to the second story. Projected removal of two protected trees is unwelcome in the extreme. Particularly, the oak is very large, old, beautiful, and shields the proposed construction from the street. If the cost of the basement is the loss of this magnificent tree, the small gains achieved are simply not worth it. In short, what comes back to us seems always to be significantly less acceptable than what we had hoped. This unfortunate outcome makes me leery of ideas I have heard from the developers that I am otherwise in favor of and would be happy to have the Planning Commission consider in the larger scheme of things. Namely, that some space might be set aside for a small park or recreation area, given the itty-bitty backyards and so on. That the developers might wish to consider combining some lots. As to the form, I'm all for a park, provided that any lighting not violate dark-sky provisions and so on. And as to the latter, the fewer lots, the better, provided that the net effect is less total lot coverage with more gracious siting of houses and not under any circumstances the enabling of houses exceeding current-size guidelines. More large houses compromise in the nature of the case, the overall tone of our community. I hope that the Planning Commission will make abundantly clear in writing that they do not understand this first house, whatever is ultimately approved, to imply license for a whole raft of similar houses, but that they expect a varied skyline, including one-story houses, and a development that doesn't look like a high-grade tract. I further hope that the Planning Commission and the General Plan Committee will see any permitted below-grade development at Stonegate to be an extraordinary concession to mitigate a whole history of bad development moves on the property, and in no case to provide an opening for such building plans elsewhere in town. Thank you.[1094.00][1094.00](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Terrell Willis, Carter Avenue. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for working these improvements into the project. I find it hard not to be unrealistically enthusiastic because it's so much better than it was. But that's not the same thing as it's being a good project yet. The second-story deck violates the Design Guideline D-1.7, "Avoid creating a two-story structure that may directly look into neighboring properties." The deck directly overlooks the two lots to the south of it. There have been rumors that lots might be deeded to the city as a park. If the two lots to the south of this one are a park, the second-story deck would no longer be a violation. As it stands now, though, it is a violation. Regarding fencing, we have been told for over a year in all of these meetings that there will be no fencing. And yet, on every blueprint, there is this fencing, at least it isn't spiked anymore. Could the word and the paper be brought into sync? Please clarify that there are no six-foot tubular fences on the property lines. Landscaping. Watching McMansions in various stages of development in Arcadia, I've come to appreciate how much trees and tall bushes help mask size. But in this drought, how can the many trees and plants depicted in the plans be established? Plus, landscape is not a permanent feature, maybe even now more so, given our climate. Would it be possible to see images of the structure without any trees or other plants in the picture that soften the blow? And I'll refer to the pictures you just saw. Lovely landscaping, lots of greenery. The proposed removal of the oak and the walnut trees is hard. When that land was scraped and reformed, the people and the wildlife in this community lost more than 90 trees. The environmental impact cannot be overstated. Is it really necessary to take out some of the few survivors? Couldn't a design be made that accommodates their existence? The height of the structure still seems disproportionate to the size of the buildable area of the lot. It looms over the surroundings. In fact, it could serve as an illustration for one of the depictions in the Hillside Management Zone ordinance of what not to build. This is Figure 1 on 17.52.120, and I think the project looks more like the one on the "not this" part. I was happy to hear about the subterranean idea originally, but I thought it would make a two-story house look more like a one-story house, not grow a two-story house into a three-story house. The Hillside Management Zone Ordinance 17.52.010, Items G and K, call for safe ingress and egress, no hazards to public welfare and safety. With a two-car garage for a five-bedroom, five-bathroom structure, there isn't much doubt that cars will be routinely parked on the street. Will there be safe passage for fire trucks? Lastly, how would the excavation be accomplished? Explosives? When the land there was demolished, some of the neighboring houses were shaking from both airborne and ground-born vibrations caused by the work that was done. What would provide more protection for the neighbors this time? Thank you for your attention.[1348.54][1348.54](APPLAUSE).
I am Barry Gold. I live at 441 Ramona Avenue. Good evening, Commissioners. Concerning the issue of basement space, which you are being asked to consider tonight, I urge you to postpone any decision until the general plan update, which you will be presenting to the city council in a few months, is adopted. I don't know if the update you have been working on properly addresses the basement issue. But certainly, before making any decisions concerning housing developments where a basement is included, you need to make sure that the general plan update addresses this issue and reflects the long-range goal of preserving the unique quality of our community. I think it would be irresponsible if you approved a project where a basement is allowed, and just a few months from now, the city council adopts a general plan update which would not allow that which you just approved. I am surprised that the staff recommended approval of this conditional-use permit, knowing that the city council will adopt a new general plan in a few months that will address the basement issue. How will you explain to citizens of Sierra Madre why you approved a project in August, knowing that in a few months, it may very well not be allowed under the revised plan? The only responsible thing to do is to postpone any decisions where a basement is involved until the general plan update, which will address the basement issue, is adopted. Then you do not have to make any decisions. Requests to build homes with basements will either comply with the general plan or they won't. In the meantime, I suggest you put on your next agenda a discussion item concerning whether basements should be included in the overall living space and whether this should even be allowed at all. Remember... Remember the developer not long ago that tried to convince you to consider... to not consider garage space in the allowable square footage? You didn't fall for that one. Don't fall for this one, which is even more absurd. Please postpone a decision on this matter until the general plan update is approved. Thank you.[1523.04][1523.04](APPLAUSE).
Hi, Barbara Lee. I know I, too, was surprised to discover that the Hillside Ordinance includes a subterranean basement. My question when I heard that was, how much subterranean, and what are the escape routes if there is a fire or earthquake? Are they completely subterranean? Or there is an area that people can escape if they're downstairs and not able to get up? So, I'm not... I'm not as educated in that subterranean area, just only for the Hillside Ordinance. I'm going to ask, because I've heard so many different things, really, at some point, either printed in the Sierra Madre, whatever it is, newspaper, or if the attorney could repeat, the settlement that we have with this particular development group. Because tonight I heard fencing, and hopefully, they don't have the spikes because there is a few of us in Sierra Madre, they're happy to go with our saws and cut the spikes off for the homeowners if they do that. It's been done before. But also, the removal of oak trees. There's just so much that I thought that the settlement agreement, and I thought we already had a park, a large location at the top of that development. So, I haven't heard the settlement agreement for some time. If it could be repeated and if we could have the bullet points put into place so those of us in the public know the do's and don'ts for that particular location. Again, with the basement, if the basement is allowable, and I thought it was to take care of the massing, not to include more square footage, would they need a sump pump? I know years ago, that entire area was flooded, the county came out, and they were within one inch of having Baldwin completely wiped out from the rain that we had. So, that's not such a dry area. I mean, it's in the high-fire zone now, but when the rains come, the rains really do come. So, there's a lot to be considered up here in this area. Also, I would not allow the CPU. I do remember in the settlement that if it is to be seen by the McComber Cabin or the Carter Barn, that that's not something that's acceptable. That's how the Hillside Ordinance was written. So, thank you.
Leslie McCall, 125 East Laurel. I just had a question. Has there been soil testing for the basement, and has that already been approved, that it's suitable as far as structure?
Danny, do you know, is there geotechnical?
That is... That will be required as part of their plan-check process.
So, it hasn't been done, but it will. It's part of the approval process.
It has been done or has not? Okay.
Not at this juncture.
No.
So, there's a possibility that it cannot... If the soil is not suitable, that it might not be able to be done?
I can't... Couldn't answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jane Harmon, 650 Baldwin Court. And I did just want to note that not all the neighbors were asked for their input on these plans. We are the only contiguous neighbor, and we were not contacted. The other thing I wanted to note, at a tree commission meeting, I believe it was in May, it was noted and admitted by the arborist who wrote the report on this development that there were many substantive errors in that report. And so, I would urge that no permits for tree removal be even considered until that arborist's report is corrected. And when I talk about errors, they involve things like stating that a tree is dead when in fact it is still alive, misidentifying tree types, and misstating tree size, which all of which could lead to... all of which could lead to trees being removed in error. Also, the other thing I wanted to ask about is the drawings show landscaping, it says, with city-approved plants on the category four slope on the east side of the property. And my understanding is from the agreements that category four slopes are to remain in their wild state and be maintained by the homeowners' association. Thank you.
Richard McDonald again, on behalf of the applicant. I was kind of waiting to see if anyone else came up, but I wanted to clarify a couple of things. The first is that the tree commission approved the lack of tree removal and other arborist tree issues last year. Second, no oak trees are being removed as a result of the basement. The third, the landscape plan and civil plan show the six-foot tubular fence, simply because they were put together by the landscape architect and the civil engineer, not Adele, but the drawings from Adele don't show it, so, or shouldn't show it. So that's not, that fence along the south side, along the back, is not going in. The request to see the project without landscaping, we've done at the prior meetings, but on March sixth, we were asked to bring it back with landscaping, which is why we did. With regard to the deck, you've heard some members of the public, Ms. Schuster, who actually recommended it, and several other, and some others that we met with, like the idea, some don't. That's fine. We're just present, I mean, if you look at it and you think, no, we don't want the deck, that's fine. We're not, we're trying to find a balance between the client's program and the community's interest. With regard to the size of the basement, when we were here on March sixth, the comment was essentially, heck, you can put the whole second floor underground and we won't care. We just want you to reduce the massing of the second floor. So that's why bedrooms and bathrooms were taken away from the front of the house. The master bedroom was reconfigured on the south side of this house, and program was shoved downstairs. But we're not wedded to the five-to-one ratio. We think there's a certain amount of square footage that's needed to be able to meet the program. But this idea of a ratio is not something that is in your ordinances or in the codes or in the settlement agreements. It's kind of a unique concept. So we're trying to balance program changes with the interest to bring massing down, and I think we've done a great job in terms of shoving it away from the street and shoving it in off the side. And then lastly, with regard to Ms. Schuster's comment about varied skylines, noncookie-cutter tract development, we had suggested to Danny a while ago, and then again recently, as well as to some of the neighbors, that we don't have any problems sitting down and working on master planning this, as opposed to going lot by lot by lot by lot. We, in fact, told people that we would tell you that tonight, which is why I'm telling you it. If that's something that the community thinks would be beneficial, we're happy to engage in that process to move things along. If people don't, if they prefer to go lot by lot by lot, then that's what we'll do. But we thought there was some merit in the idea that when you're talking about a number of parcels that are near each other, that it makes some sense to be doing the design and development of them in tandem, or at least concurrently, so that you, as the commission, can see what they look like. You're not just looking at one house with just blocks for massing, as you saw, I think, in last year's example, where you saw, you know, this lot, but then the other lots adjacent to it didn't have anything on it except a cube. So that's something that we would, should that be of interest, we'd be happy to do as well. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you speak in regard to the comment of some lots becoming open space or being dedicated to the city as a?
I think Ms. Lee was correct. My understanding is there were some carve-outs up at the top part as part of the settlement agreement.
Okay.
And then Lot three and four have to be tied together, and there'll only be one development on that. We have ourselves looked at a couple of lots and possibly combining them because of the way the grading was done. I think Lot ten and eleven or eleven and twelve at the top of Baldwin there, the way the grading is done and the way the pads finished is kind of funky and not really, well, I would just say it kind of lacks common sense. So we've looked at doing that ourselves, and we've mentioned to staff that we'd like to talk to them about that as well.
Okay. And can you comment in that regard to either one of the lots, on either side of this lot?
Unfortunately not. I haven't even spoken to the client or Adele about the lots on either side of this lot, to be quite honest.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, did you have a question?
No.
I'm Carol Parker. I live on Mariposa. I have a comment to Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Mr. McDonald. You made a comment about, quote, that the community had said, it's something like this, it's okay, you can, you can put everything underground. Well, we didn't mean that you could have two stories and another story underground, meaning three stories of living. We meant one story above and one story below. I think you might have taken that out of context. And my question to the planning commission is about a basement. I built my house in two thousand and five, and I want to know, have the laws changed about basements in Sierra Madre? Danny, do you know? Does anyone know?
Clarify, what do you mean?
I tried to build a basement, because I did come from the east coast, and I wanted a basement. And I couldn't build one because I needed a variance from all of my neighbors, and I felt that was just going to be too much. So I had to make it a crawl space. So I found out the height, and it was fine for me, because I'm short, and I didn't care about anybody else. Seriously.
Well, we can't speak to your house and your project.
No, but it was a certain height.
In regards to this, underground space is permitted. Basements in the guidelines.
So it's, it depends on, it depends on each house? A basement size? A basement height?
This is in the Hillside.
This is in the Hillside Ordinance.
Okay, all right. I wanted to find out about that.
Carve-out.
Okay, I wanted to find out about that, because I had said that, asked several people that, and they didn't know, and they wanted me to ask also. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the commission here to discuss. Who would like to take a crack first here?
I guess I'll take a crack. I'll probably come back later with a few more things to say. Mr. McDonald said that people in the commission said, heck, put the whole second story underground. But I don't think we were thinking that what, the amount that went underground would be in addition to what was already there. I was pretty surprised when I saw these plans, because I think actually the above-ground part is improved. There's some things about there that are much better. And I was pretty astonished to see that this basement was so large. It's, I mean, the square footage of this house, and I know it doesn't count in the square footage, but it is a hugely larger amount of living space than I was expecting to see. I was thinking that we take stuff out of the second floor and put it in the basement and not add another whole thousand feet or something in addition to what came out of the first floor. Again, I'd like to mention this issue with fencing and walls. If you're going to give us plans, they should be internally consistent, because it's extremely confusing to us, and there's no way that we can approve things that aren't correctly drafted. It's really important, because what we see is what we approve. Someone made a suggestion about not approving this and waiting for future rules to get made. We can't really do that, because there's the streamlining, what's that called? The?
Permit streamlining.
Permit Streamlining Act, which gives timeframes for when we have to make decisions. And so we can't just arbitrarily put things off and decide later based on some decision that may be, may be made in the future. It's not allowed. What's the issue about landscaping in category four slopes? What, I mean, is it, I don't, I know that you can't build anything on category four slopes, but I can't remember what the issue is about landscaping.
Right. You're correct. It's about no, no building development, no structure on category four, no fences on category four.
Can you put irrigation on category four?
I think the intent is, is to keep it at its natural state.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think you could disturb it.
Right.
I think it's supposed to be left pretty much.
Not alone.
I mean, the, the notes on here basically said per landscaping, per Sierra Madre regulations. So if the regulations say it has to be left in natural state, I presume that's what that would mean. The trees that are going to be removed for this have been approved by the tree commission?
It has, yeah. It has.
There was a walnut tree that's going to be removed?
There were four, four California walnut, and there was a condition that they be replaced. And then it was approved by the, that condition was approved by the, by the tree advisory commission. Let me look for it.
That's all I just, that's all I want to say right now.
If I may clarify, drought-tolerant landscaping and irrigation may be placed in slope four category, according to the Hillside Management Zone Ordinance.
So you could irrigate it, but it needs to be drought-tolerant landscaping?
Landscaping.
So you probably wouldn't want to irrigate it a lot. Thank you.
If I can comment next, I think the applicant's come a long way with the design of the structure. I, I think that the size of the second story has greatly improved, but I'm still concerned with the overall mass and height. So if, I would like to ask them to consider the height in regards to the ceiling heights of the first and second floor. They're currently at nine feet, so I think reducing those heights would greatly reduce the overall height of the structure. And I think it's come a long way.
This, this is my first time back, and it's, I have a strong sense of deja vu, because we've been through this before on, like, another lot, three lots up, was it before? So, and what's fascinating to me is the difference between this process, what we're going through with this development, and the one that happened right across the street with Kensington. The developer listened to our, our concerns, and comparatively, that, that project went through very quickly, because there was, they incorporated what they heard, and they didn't have a sense of trying to take advantage. I never got the sense that they were, they were trying to ask for anything more than what we were, what we wanted. And so I look at this project, and we notice that the, there is reduced floor area, and I will admit that the, the evolution of the plans for this has been very good. And, and I said this before my last tour of duty, that the architect is very skilled. But there was a total reduction of two hundred and sixty-eight square feet in the visible mac, mass and bulk, mass and bulk of the, of the structure. And that's what we've been saying, you know, we, we need it reduced. And so one of the options that the, apparently that came out was, well, why don't you use subterranean space to reduce the mass and bulk of the, of the, of the project? And so they added a one thousand three hundred and forty-nine square foot basement to, and reduce the, the upper part for only two hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Well, that, you know, we, we were glad that they heard our message that to maybe move some, move some of the project to a, an area where it can't be seen, but it does seem like they're taking advantage of the situation by adding an extra, you know, you know, not taking, not using that subterranean as, as what, as what we intended it to do, which was to reduce the overall visible size of the structure. And I believe that the architect has the skill to do that, but for some reason, they're, the developer or whoever is doing this, has decided that they're going to take as much as they can, and that's why we seem to be, keep bumping up against each other. And, you know, I'm sorry to say that this might be a repeat of the, of the previous project, where, you know, they keep trying to find out, well, how much can we, can we take? And, you know, we're, we're not willing to give that much. And we've, and I applaud the commission for meeting, and the, and the community for meeting with the developer to offer them solutions to the project. I mean, I think we've tried to, to negotiate in good faith, but I'm not sure it's come back to us.
I would just like to follow up on that. I'm, I'm just going to read from the, the design guidelines for the Hillside Ordinance, which says, "The following techniques are recommended: Use of below-grade rooms to reduce building mass and provide energy-efficient and environmentally desirable spaces," which to me means you use the below-grade rooms to take the building mass that's above and put it underground, which they've done with two hundred feet, and then they've added an additional thousand feet on top of what they've taken from above. And I think it certainly defeats the spirit of, of this, and also the language of it, I think, when it comes right down to it.
Yeah, and I think that speaks highly to.
It says right here, use of below-grade rooms to reduce building mass.
Well, you know, I know that the, at the last meeting this was discussed, we had, Tom was sitting next to me, and he says, you know what? Why don't you take it below ground? And I don't, I thought, well, that'd sound good to me, but I guess we just didn't give enough of a visual. So to me, when we were talking about taking it below ground, we were talking about this much being up that you could see, and this much being below. Taking half the house and going below ground with it. So to me, as Bob says, this really looks like it's taken advantage, because I'm pretty sure they're going to charge whoever buys this house for that thousand square feet that's not being counted against the size of it. And it's just not, really not in the spirit of actually trying to get this project pushed through. I do have a concern with the fact that we are going to be finishing up the general plan, and it's going to have to do with basements in there, and it's, I don't know if we can...
We can't.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, that's fine, but I, to me, this isn't going to, like I said, not in the spirit. It still looks too weight, way too big, too bulky.
Well, I'll just say it another way. I think, you know, the findings I can't make apply to D one point five, one point six. They've done a commendable job at working with the public. I like the fact that, you know, Ms. McDonald, Ms. Chang have sought out people in the, in the community, you know, probably the tough sells in town, so, but it's still, yeah, it still has that same look. It doesn't meet one point five, one point six. I guess maybe, like, once someone said we always imagined a one-story building with, I mean, I don't kind of, I don't really care, maybe I'm the one that said something about, I don't care how big the basement is, but I think we just envisioned a nice-looking one-story house with some access to a, a large basement, you know, no matter what, just to bring down the, the bulk and mass of the, of the house in general. They could still have some, you know, maybe a master bedroom upstairs or something like that, too, because they've articulated it well, and I agree with Bob, the architect's great. Just a little more work.
All right, I guess it's my turn here to close. I, I agree with a lot of the comments the fellow commissioners have made. I think, you know, to begin with, I do commend Adele and Mr. McDonald, working with folks in the community in devising this new plan. And I think this is a vast improvement from what we've seen previous in terms of the second floor. I think some of my disappointment lies in the, the fact that while basement strategically was a great solution to move some of the square footage from the second floor down and help alleviate the massing issue that we've, we've been having, I think this sort of two hundred and sixty-eight square feet for thirteen hundred and fifty square feet, I think there's just something that's out of whack with that. I was a little disappointed that more square footage couldn't have been moved, and I think the linchpin on that is hanging on to the fact that the upstairs needs to have X amount of bedrooms, X amount of shared space, et cetera. I think, you know, what Gina stated was, is true. I think the basement's purpose in this case is to re, to... I think the basement's purpose in this case is to re, to reallocate some of that mass, i.e. square footage or spaces, to that level. When you look at the basement as currently configured, it just seems like a lot of just space that's storage and wine cellar, some game, a game common space, and then a fairly large bedroom, um, you know, almost twenty feet by fourteen feet wide. And I, I understand some of the complexities when you move spaces, habitable spaces to basements, you know, the light and air, access to the outside, those things. You, you, you wind up compromising, but I think there may be a way to move some additional square footage that is currently being used on the second floor to the basement. You know, simply by the way you configure the, the basement level. I think even this, this den space that's, we're going to call it a bedroom because that's what it is. But if you had mirrored that to the upper side of the game room so that it had light and air looking off of that light, well, you could suddenly get two, two bedrooms down there and eliminate some of that square footage on the, the second level. I'm finding also, you know, I applaud you on, on reworking sort of the space above the garage and, and which was somewhat problematic covering that entire area. But the deck, you know, and I, and I know you got a mixed crowd there, you know, with those sort of in proponent of the deck space and some who aren't. But, um, actually, when I look at the elevations, especially the south side, it, it tends to feel very much as a tall wall. And I know there's some guardrail articulation, but I imagine that wall face is probably about fourteen feet, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, even the garage face itself. And I think it's moving in the right direction with stepping that mass back, but that, I'm having some heartburn with the way that, that elevation is being presented. It's kind of hard to read in the, the 2D plans, but you can see it in some of the 3D that you showed. So, I, I think this is better. I, I don't think this is the best, best yet, and I think it's moving in that direction. But, um, I don't know if, I think more of the mass on the second floor needs to move to, to alleviate some of that massing and bulk and height, um, issues. So you're definitely on your way, but I, I think there's still some more work to be done. So, that's where we're at.
Well, you have, um, it sounds to me that you, um, would like them to, to consider, if they're willing, to do some, do some more design revisions based on your comments. And if they're willing, you could continue the project. And you could ask the applicant if they are willing to do that. So your options are for continuance. I don't think you're at a point where you want to approve it, uh, but you also have an option to deny it this evening. So, I, I'd suggest if you want to ask the applicant if they're willing to come back, they could.
Could we have the applicant come up? Was this referred to us by city council?
It was.
It was. It was remanded back to, um, to the planning commission specifically to deal with D one point one to one point nine of the Stonegate Design Guidelines, which address bulk, mass, and scale.
So does it, does it start over again in terms of, you know, the give and taking and revision? Because they, they, didn't they appeal this, to appeal the, the commission's last decision?
Yes, they appealed the, the commission's denial.
And, and so the city council pushed it back to the commission?
Yes, correct.
And so does, do, do we start over again with the, the city coun, the attorney says no.
No, I'm, I don't, I seem to be having difficulty with my, um, microphone. Um, it was, it was procedurally, this was remanded back to the planning commission with a narrow focus to, uh, work with the applicant, to make changes to the plan and focus on the design guidelines, D one through, or they-
One point nine.
Yeah, um, one, D, D one through, uh, D point nine. And that should be the focus. And what I'm hearing the commission say this evening, which hopefully the applicant is, is, is also hearing, is that the applicant is missing an opportunity here to reduce the massing and scale. That has been the problem all along. And the opportunity being missed is that there is now a creative solution of some, sub, a subterranean level. And the opportunity here is to move more of the bulk and massing. We're not, this is not about square footage. It's about appearance. And that's the disappointment that, that I'm hearing, is there's an opportunity missed here. And so we shouldn't focus so much on the overall size. And it is also true that under the HMZ zone, that we don't even count the square footage on the subterranean level. But, um, this basement level is a place and an opportunity to help reduce the massing. And that's what I'm hearing the commission pretty much unanimously saying is that we're just not there yet. That is also the task that the city council remanded back to you to do is to focus on these findings, which mostly have to do with massing and articulation. So I think at this point, as Danny suggested, one of your options is to, is to continue it, to see if, uh, ask the architect if they'd like to take another stab, to try to further reduce the, the massing and the scale on the, the top floor, the third floor. Um, or, uh, of course, you also have the opportunity to deny it. And I don't hear, um, as Danny stated, any, uh, movement toward approval this evening. However, as you've also said, they have come a long way. And with the solution of the basement, there is, there's still this opportunity to maybe get the whole way there if they're willing to do it.
Thank you. That was a good stating of what I was thinking. I mean, there is all this room in the basement where more, more mass could be moved down, more this up, upper mass could be moved down there. And I think, I would like to see that happen.
So are you open to continuing?
Let me, uh, first off, say I disagree with the city attorney's, uh, statement. I think her statement is, she's being a good lawyer in terms of trying to cover up a number of legal problems that have been created, but I'll give her credit for at least doing that. I think the reality of what I'm hearing is that you would like a one-story house with a basement that has essentially the program from the second floor in the basement. Problem with the residents-
I don't think we're saying that.
I didn't say, I didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
I believe you did, number one. And number two, the problem when you start taking more of the program from the second floor and putting it in the basement means putting more bedrooms in the basement. And when you start putting more bedrooms in the basement, you start getting into not only marketability, but family living program. Not many people want their small children in the basement. They want them near them in the master bedroom. I know I did when I remodeled my house. My kids' bedrooms are fifteen feet from mine upstairs. So when you start talking on these, you know, let's just take more off and put it down there without looking what the it is, becomes very problematic in terms of how the house functions, how the house will function, how a family will live in there. Now, I want to clarify one thing. The, the basement is actually about eight hundred and ninety-five square feet, not thirteen hundred. Adele was just telling me there was a prob, there was a mistake made in the number. They changed the drawing, but they didn't change apparently the number. I'm not going to defend it. I didn't have anything to do with it, but it, it, I, I would share your frustration in that regard. That said, um, on the one hand, you're, you're sort of saying, well, wait a minute, we didn't think the basement would be this big. But then you're saying, wait a minute, take more program off the top floor and put it down below. Somewhat contradictory as well. So the, the problem we have to do from our end of the telescope is look at this in terms of who might live there and how they will live. And if you're talking about a basement, that becomes more problematic the more you expand it for people to be living there on more than a, uh, going down to their den to do some work for a little while. It just is. It's just a reality we face.
I don't think, I don't think we're saying make the basement larger. We're saying reconfigure it in a, in a more efficient manner where you could utilize it to move some of that mass down. Right now, you've, you've moved part of that mass down, and then you've added wine cellars and a large storage space mass that's irrelevant to what you have on the second floor.
And as I said when I came up, we're not wedded to that. I mean, if you want to reduce the storage space, go ahead.
No, we're not saying, we're not telling you what to do. We're saying there's an opportunity to move some additional mass to the basement without compromising the second story. We're not saying eliminate the second story. We're saying there's an opportunity to move some more of it down and still retain the second story.
Well, you know, all I-
And not only that, we, we also mentioned about just reducing the height by, uh, lower ceiling heights. So, you know, let's not just focus on the basement issue because it's-
No, I understand, I understand your point. The, the, I think the, the, for lack of a better phrase, the current, uh, market and trend right now in residences is a nine-foot floor-to-ceiling height, which is what we have.
Yeah, which may be appropriate for a larger-sized lot.
This is a, it's appropriate for this house the way it's designed. I mean, it's not out of context in that sense. You know, the other homes, there may be other homes in this development that may be eight and a half feet or eight feet. I mean, I, I'm not, I don't think we're wedded to any one size, for whatever that's worth. But on this home, the way it's laid out, nine feet seems to, with the type of style that it is, nine feet seems appropriate.
You keep talking about your program on these houses. All that I hear that you're concerned with is getting five bedrooms in these houses. I mean, if it could be three bedrooms, maybe you would only need one story. Okay, but if you're going to go five bedrooms, try to, you can't stick them in one story. You have to go two-story, one above ground and one below ground. It's the way I, I see it right now. And so to me, it's like, what's the give and take? The ordinance says that you, there are certain things you've got to meet. You can't be too bulky, too massive. That's what the guidelines say. And for us to help you do that, we've given you some suggestions. I don't know which way it's going to play out because you're going to have to go with whatever suggestions. Your, what you've shown us has taken some bulk off it, but not enough, is from what I'm hearing from the rest of the commissioners. So, maybe you-
Understood. I, look, I understand what you're saying from, from, you know, I got involved in this case in July of last year and went back and watched all the videos of the, uh, earlier proceedings. And as Adele said tonight, from the beginning of this submission early last year, two thousand and thirteen, to now, they've reduced the square footage by, you know, six, seven hundred square feet. They've put program in the basement.
I think she said five hundred.
Five hundred, six hundred?
She said five hundred.
Um, you know, they're willing to, although the, although the facilities agreement that the city entered into and the settlement agreement and all these other documents the city entered into, they're willing to work with the city to amend those, to do this grading, to incur the additional cost of a basement. Um, they're willing to limit the second story and bring the massing down, even though they're allowed a second story. I mean, I think, to be quite honest, they've come very, very far to try to meet you, try to meet halfway. But halfway is where we're kind of disagreeing where that point is.
Okay, but the journey's not done. You, you need to go further, from what I understand, from the commission and the community.
Well, fine.
It's still bulky and so that, but that's the way it looks to me. I mean, we can argue about who wants to live in the basement, who doesn't want to live in the basement. I mean, whichever way you want to do that.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm also saying that we disagree where the fifty-yard line is.
I just, I would just like to say that I, I, I'm not opposed to having some amount of the mass of this house on a second floor above ground. I think that that amount needs to be as reduced as possible. And, and the more you're, if you have all this room underground, then more of the use of the building should be moved up there.
Understood.
That's what I'm, that's my personal opinion on this, and I think that, that it would be possible to do it. I think that, um, our job is to make sure that whatever buildings are proposed fit with the guidelines that we are offered in the, in our zoning code and in the hillside ordinance and, and in the, the agreement about this particular program. The planning commission's job is not to fulfill your program of how, how big you want your house to be and who you want to sell it to. That's not what we're tasked with. Um, it's not our job.
I understand. It is my job, though.
I know it's your job, and we have two different jobs.
And that's why I'm saying we're disagreeing about where the fifty-yard line is.
Right.
But this, this commission has to deal with the public, and long after you've made your money and you're gone, we're going to be living with that house.
That's right.
And so part of our job is to look at the community values as they're encoded and make sure that whatever happens is, are faithful to the community, and the community can live with long after we're gone. So we understand that you're, you want to make money and move on, but once you've left, we are going to be stuck with whatever it is you create. And we have an obligation to the rest of the community to make sure that that is something that is the most palatable to the community. And right now, that's why we hold very, that's why we're holding very tightly to what we believe is the fifty, our fifty-yard line. And we're not likely to negotiate that. And for example, you, you have a, a storage, you have a room that's labeled storage. It's two hundred and thirty-eight square feet, twelve by fourteen in the basement. That doesn't do much for your program.
It does when you remove the closet space from the first and second floor to create less massing on the second floor. You create a need, you create-
Then, then you have a creative architect and do that.
We did do that. We moved bedroom, two bedrooms and bathrooms off the second floor. We moved closet space off the floor, which created the need for storage space down there. And the reality too, when you, when you make these sort of ad hominem, you know, they're going to make their money and leave, we've said repeatedly at every hearing that this applicant intends to live in this development. She's going, and we've represented this many times, live on lot eighteen. So it's not as if she wants a bad neighborhood or bad designs to, to be where she's going to be raising her children. So, I mean, I think to, to kind of go down that path of you're going to make your money and leave is a little unnecessary.
We have over, I just would like to say, I can't speak to this particular person. But over and over, people come to us and say, I'm building this house and I'm going to live here, and they don't. That's, that is the, that is the reality that we face all the time on the planning commission. I can't say how many times that happens. Every time people say that, it doesn't happen.
Sam Marino, he's going to split the lot, and this is a wonderful place. I'd love to, this is, this house, this town is more beautiful than Sam Marino. And he was going in a heartbeat.
We're extremely skeptical about this because we hear that from every person who's building a house, and it, it doesn't happen.
I'd like, go ahead, Mrs. Gina.
Oh, I, I just wanted to respond to the comment about the storage room and make some comment about the basement. We wanted to create a space where we, some mention was asked, somebody asked about a sump pump. Yes, there will be a sump pump there. You need one just in case, uh, whenever you do a basement. And we originally created a small little room for the sump pump, so it won't be kind of this grate right in the middle of livable area. Then we started to think about, um, differential settlement. When you have, uh, footings at different levels and when the house above nowadays are built with, um, slab-on-grade and then the part over the basement will be wood-framed and, uh, there's different materials and so forth. And regardless, even if the whole floor is a raised wood floor, there is a kind of a difference in the amount of weight and the different, uh, levels of where the footings will be. So those of you who are architects here will agree to that. So when we're drawing this, we thought, okay, we're so close to the perimeter that, um, maybe we should go ahead and instead of having, stopping short five feet from the footprint above, we should for, for those reasons, to avoid differential settlement, cracks or whatever, go ahead and, um, take it to the edge of the footprint. Um, I agree. I think that den bedroom below is a little bit oversized. We started out with it smaller. So that's the reason. The other reason, creating a little room to put the, um, sump pump in. Um, eventually looking at it, and it's only, you know, a few more feet and you're to the perimeter wall. So we thought, well, if the city doesn't count it anyway, we'll, and we'll go ahead and, and take it out. It's in effect no different from a crawl space. But if you, you know, hate it so much, we'll take it out. We'll put the sump right in the middle or, or something. I, I don't know. We'll figure it out. It's, it really was not an effort to take advantage of the situation. In fact, um, uh, we originally proposed, okay, we have this basement, you know, what are we going to do with it? There are not that many things that really can go into a basement. go into a basement and make it that livable. But people put things like home theater, storage, wine cellars and stuff like that in basement. So, we originally proposed these, this additional program. And the client didn't want to have it. He, she eliminated the home theater. So, that's where there's a little bit of a disconnect. I need to go back and recalc the footage because it's, I just noticed in our before and after, with and without the home theater, we show the same square footage. So, we, it's possible that we didn't update when we submitted. It's because I've been on this project for over a year now. We're a little bit tired of it. And so, because of that, my, and I've been sick, too. I haven't been working full-time because of a health issue. So, I didn't double-check the numbers. So, I apologize for that. But I wanted to explain, we're not here to take advantage of the situation as people are accusing us of. It's, it's so easy to paint architects and developers as such bad guys.
You know, and I.
That's what we were trying to do.
I don't think, and that's another point, I just want to say, I don't think you've heard from the commission here. In fact, I think every commissioner here opened with the fact that we applauded you for how far you've come from the last time.
Always do that. Bad job we deny.
No.
Like every time, oh, architect great, and but, then the bad news, every single time.
Haven't you been held to standard? Excuse, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, you can hear what you want to hear, but I think we've, we've applauded your, your talent and ability to develop and stay with this project over the course of wherever we are now and where you've come. And I think we're just making some comments to tell you that we're, we're not quite there yet. Whether you want to accept that or not, that's your prerogative. I think there are some opportunities here with the basement that you could better utilize. If you choose to do that or not, that's, that's your purview, but.
Can I just add, just to put a different, you know, flavor on this? I mean, everybody's concentrating on the basement. And actually, I appreciate Mr. McDonald's comments because, because if I had a family and kids, I'd feel the same way. There's some practical aspect of it. And like, to go back to what other people are saying about sort of the envision of one-story house visually, is there any more room on the first floor or on the building pad?
Well, at one of the previous submittals and hearings, I had said that I made the mistake initially of thinking that the city would not want a lot of garage doors on the street. And I pushed it to the back, thinking that I was creating a better street scene. Now, you guys approved a bunch of lots that are fairly narrow and fairly small with limited pad areas. And you guys went ahead and made a settlement agreement allowing for the square footage.
The planning commission had nothing to do with that.
We understand that.
Well, I don't care, the city. I mean, I'm a little bit angry, just as angry as maybe some of the residents are.
Yeah, you can ask anybody in the town, they're pretty angry with the fact that City Council did that.
Okay. And so, we were tasked to work with these lots, and I wanted to keep a garage away from the street scene. And by doing that, we have the space. And it was told to me at some of the other hearings that, yes, you do like that the garage is in the back. So, we have kept it in the back all this time. But that is at the sacrifice of some first, of some ground-level square footage.
How about?
Okay.
Sure. Okay. Well, I'm just asking, because I mean, if you pushed it forward and, and is there any room in the back of the house behind, to move it back closer to the, to the hillside? I don't know how.
They're 12 feet.
Then there'll be no backyard lot. Somebody was already.
There are hardly as any now.
I know. That wasn't important to me at the previous meetings because I knew you had that slope, which is sort of a, you know, it's sort of a, and that particular lot has that, that angled area, which is sort of an angled slope for a backyard. And I understand that. I'm just asking whether or not you see any, and I know you feel like you've gotten back, you've been ping-ponging back and forth from back-front, back-front with the garage situation. I'm just asking you in just terms of square footage on the, if, I mean, I would be open to it, just because it seems to me that what we were envisioning was more of a one-story house with, you know, irregardless of where you have to put the garage. And I know you, now you're stuck with this 7,000-square-foot building pad and where do you put things? Sure.
Your, your comment is a very good one, for, for two reasons, or three reasons. One, we did explore that idea, not after March 6th, actually before March 6th. Two, what we've heard, though, not only on this lot, but previously when Lot 21 and 22 were considered on the same evenings, we heard people liked the garage, pushed to the back, even though we talked about, you know, we're losing a certain amount of space here where second-floor program could go down to the first floor and not create the program problems that I was just talking about in terms of moving it to the basement. Third, though, while I agree with you that the garage should come forward and you should just put more program space on the first floor, you've also now hit what I call the Rubik's Cube, right? This is where, okay, you turn that side and then somebody else is going to say, well, wait a minute, there's a problem with the backyard and you don't have enough backyard space. So, then you try to fix that. And it either, I mean, the analogies that I've used over the past year, because of the straitjacket that we have with regard to how these lots were put together and how the pads were put on them, is, I call it, it's either a Rubik's Cube problem, or it's the silly putty problem, where you push on this end and it pops on that end. So, that's, and, and when you look at the design guidelines, as we tried to explain on, on March 6th, not all of them are clear-cut black and white. Most of them in many ways are, are strong shades of gray. So, that's where you start getting into this push and pull, which we get. That's why you now see, that's why on March 6th, when it seemed like there was a real deadlock, we said, look, you know, there was a former chair whose name I don't remember, older gentleman with white hair. We said, look, throw out whatever ideas you want and we'll take a look at them and see what we can do. And then there was a certain amount of breakthrough with regard to the basement. If moving the garage is something that there was a strong enough consensus, because up until now, there hasn't been. And so, when we looked at it before and thought about it and talked about it and got shot down on it, we then didn't come back to it.
Right. And I, and I think in the past, it was in context with the overall design. Everybody was so abhorrent to the bulk and mass of the house. It was almost like, if they thought we pushed the garage back, maybe something else would disappear miraculously, but it obviously didn't. So, I mean, I think that was just miscommunicated because this sort of, this design doesn't really look that way to me. It looks like we're, we're still trying to get that second floor in there as much. And I understand the Rubik's Cube, silly putty example, but I'm now saying with the basement issue, I think there was some expectation that we might revisit that. And I don't know if that opens the, you know, the door for Mrs. Chang or, or even the other commissioners. I don't know what their thoughts on it. They should, they can bring that up since I'm opening the can of worms.
I'll tell you my thoughts, which is like, you're trying to pour 16 ounces of Coke into a 12-ounce cup. It just doesn't fit very well, does it? It's overflowing, because there's too much. And that's what D 1.2 is all, is talking to the point of.
And I, you know, I think if you drive around the city of Sierra Madre, you, we have two-story buildings, and I don't think anyone on this commission would be adverse to a two-story building. But they are of a certain size and certain dimensions and they, they, they are not as large and they don't show the bulk and massing that this one does. Do all of them have five bedrooms? No, we have very few houses in town with five bedrooms. So, perhaps if you wanted to make it smaller, you give up one of the bedrooms. And you could do that in a heartbeat and be back here and you may, it may work. But you seem to be locked into, it has to have all these extra accoutrements and all these extra parts. And, you know, how you're going to jam those into the space you have, that's, that's why architects are good. I mean, I'm not an architect and I admire people that can use space creatively and do all that. I think you have a good architect. I've been looking at her drawings for a number of years. And, and I'm not, I, I think she has the skill set to do what you want to do, but I think she's being told that it will have X, Y, and Z, and there's only so many ways to make X, Y, and Z fit in on the space that you're allotted. Are they, are these lots difficult? Absolutely. We, we'll give you that. And are, are they tough to develop? Yes. There's not, there's the, the plot plan for the lots where, where you have developable space is very limited. And some of those lots are pretty awkward. But that's the playing field that we're all given. So, that came with the territory. But is, are there creative ways of solving it? I believe there are. And, you know, that, but, but we are unwilling to go back on some of the things that, that have already been encoded by the city in our development standards. So, you know, I think you have, I think, you know, maybe you need to have the discussion in amongst yourselves. Do we need, do, do we need to sell a house with five stories, five, five bedrooms? Does it, can it have four? You know, because that would, might, that might make it, that might give you the ability to make it less large and it would appear smaller with less bulk and massing. But that's your decision. So, you've, you've made some decisions to be, to give to us, and we're, we've given them back to you. So, you know, the ball's on your court.
More of a basketball game with center court than the 50-yard line, huh?
So, Mr. McDonald, what's your pleasure? Should we?
My, my pleasure, or I shouldn't even say my pleasure, my, in terms of what I'm authorized to do, is ask you to either approve it with whatever conditions of approval you deem appropriate or, or not. But the client has asked that we not keep continuing it. One thing, I, I mentioned the approve it with whatever conditions of approval that you want because, you know, if you deny it, obviously we will appeal it. If you approve it with conditions of approval that take it to where you think it should go, then I don't know how the client would react to that, but I'd have to find out. And if she ends up appealing it, then that's not very different than if you deny it. But at least there's a possibility she may accept it. I don't know.
I would like to just respond to that. And, and aside from the issues of massing and bulk, which I don't think have been addressed yet, these plans have too many errors. Errors in them for us to approve it at present. She just, we, we're just told that the square foot, the square foot number for the basement is not correct. We have issues of, of.
Fences.
The fences are not correct in these plans. I can personally not approve plans that, that, that the applicant tells us are not correct.
Well, I, I sat as a planning commissioner for almost nine years and used to do that all the time. So, I think you have it within your jurisdiction and authority to do it. If you don't want to, personally prefer not to.
I missed you at the planning commission in Sierra Madre doing that.
I'm sorry, what?
Said I missed you when you sat on this planning commission doing that. That was, Pasadena?
Obviously, I didn't sit on Sierra Madre's. But having said that, I'm talking about what's within your jurisdiction and authority to do, not what your personal preference or practice may be. Obviously, if you personally prefer not to, that's up to you.
Okay. So, it sounds to me that you're telling us we need to vote as to whether we're going to deny this or not. Is that what?
He's looking for a thumbs up or down, so.
Actually, I would prefer a thumbs up with conditions of approval. But if your preference isn't to do that and you prefer to deny it, that's up to you. You know, if you prefer to continue it, that's up to you, too, actually. According, I would agree with Danny, you have the right to do that, too. I, or was it the city, one of the two, I said, you have the right to do that, too. You have the right to continue it for 30 days and say, bring it back with X, Y, and Z. I mean, I'm, I'm not challenging your authority or jurisdiction to make any of those decisions.
Well, I would make a motion to continue it if I could get a second. That would be my preference.
Is that your motion?
My motion to continue to a date certain, or?
Do you want to come back to the September?
I'd want a date certain, and I'll also continue to do whatever you are thinking. Hopefully, hopefully solve the Rubik's Cube.
Well, yeah, other than making recommendations on what I would make, conditions of approval, which would be so crazy, I mean, it would probably, it would, it can't be tantamount to redesign. So, I don't think I could even make any. But I'll, I'll make the motion if I'll.
To continue.
To continue.
September 18th would be the next.
September 18th.
Well, my question to you is if we continue it, is there going to be any change, given the statements we have, the comments we made today, or is it going to come back exactly the same way in a month from now?
Not to play basketball here, back and forth, but I did have a question. I, I think Commissioner Peckner asked what other people's reactions were about moving the garage, and I didn't quite get a sense of that.
Well, that would be, that might be something, that, that's what I was alluding to in terms of conditions of approval, but I wouldn't make a motion to approve it on that if, you know. Maybe we could, just before we go through with the, a second, have a discussion about moving the garage to allow them more space on the first floor or the main, the building pad.
Personally, I like where the garage is.
I'm not ready to play architect and redesign his project for him yet. I mean.
Let's just say, move 500 feet to the first floor. I mean.
That would increase the, the footprint on the first floor. I'm not hip on that.
That's what I'm getting at. It's we either further discuss it, discuss it, or give them an open continuance to come back or.
I mean, he's got a good architect, and I think that the architect can mull it over. I mean, for all I care, they can put the garage in the basement and then use that for, you know. I mean, there's a lot of solutions here, and I don't want to be the one that has to come up with it.
Yeah. I mean, I think Bob's right. I, I don't think we can give you specifics of what needs to shift to what, to make, how to shift that Rubik's Cube. But I think the, conceptually, I think what we're saying is additional mass on the second story needs to be reduced or shifted or moved. Where you move that, whether it's the first floor or the basement, that's to be determined by you and your team. But I think globally, that's what we're saying. Like that, we're not opposed to a second story. We're not saying eliminate it. We're saying that it's still not quite there, sort of in terms of the bulk and mass. And further investigation and looking at that and how you can move more of that or reduce some of that mass from where you've come or where you're at would be warranted and welcomed. And if that's something you choose to look at, then we are more than happy to continue.
Okay. Can I have a minute to talk to?
Sure.
I mean, I obviously need to do that.
Sure.
There is a motion on this favor. We just doesn't have a second yet.
Should we take a break? Or should we?
Yeah, you could.
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay.
All right, welcome back to the planning commission meeting here. We will resume. In answer to Commissioner Fireman Hunt's question, you know, if you continued it, would we come back with something different? The short answer is, if we came back, the most we would come back with is either a substantial reduction or elimination of the basement. The, the program on the second floor is essentially a master bedroom and two children's bedrooms, and the client is not interested in shrinking that any further, because that's appropriate to have kids' bedrooms near their parents' bedrooms. So I wanted to be as honest and straight up as I could in answering the question, and there's, so. With that, if, if you don't think that's of interest, worthy of a continuance, then we'd ask you to just vote on the project.
So what's our pleasure?
We've given the applicant an, an, an option to address the issue, which is reduction in the bulk and massing. And whether we, you know, they're going to tell us one way or the other, they're going, they're going to respond one way or the other. And, and if we give them another option to do that, then, you know, we are bending over backwards to assist them, and to give them the opportunity to address our concerns. And if they still continue, you know, if they, if they want to say, well, you know, it sounds like from what he said, that, that they may eliminate their opportunity to reduce the, the bulk and massing. But that'll be on them. And so I, I think it, it would behoove us to, you know, make them the offer, and, and let them decide, you know, how they want to do it. They may have second thoughts later on, but I think we've made, I, I think we've been more than accommodating, and we have been more than helpful and specific in our concerns. They, they ask for, you know, what are the conditions? They would like to know what, you know, for, quite honestly, the only thing I can tell them is that the conditions for me would be less bulk and massing, and blueprints that are accurate. You know, I think, so.
I, I'm kind of of the same mind. I think we, we extend the continuance. And then, if it's not met with any changes, then so be it, but we've done all we can.
Yeah, and I'd just like to go back to, I think that, 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 the issues that we are concerned with have to do with the architecture check, well, number D 1.1 and D 1.2 in the One Cotter Avenue Design Guidelines. And I think particularly this issue of use of below-grade rooms to reduce building mass, and to make sure that it fits the profile of the natural slopes, and it's appropriate to the area. I'd like to just make sure that we're going back to, to the design guidelines, that we were asked to evaluate this based on. And giving that, Phil, you made it, you did make a motion to continue, right?
Yes.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's to September, that is to?
September 18th. It's a date certain?
Yes, correct. All right. We do have an additional item on today's agenda here, so. Item four, conditional use permit 1403, CUP 1403, and minor conditional use permit 1404.
Sure, and I'd like to bring back Leticia Cardoso, our senior planner, to make the staff report.
Good evening again, commissioners. The next item is a request to allow the additional, the addition of 1,883 square feet to the existing residence, and construction of a new 1,063-square-foot residential unit to replace the existing 297-square-foot unit at the rear of the property located at 126 East Laurel Avenue. There's also a minor conditional use permit, which is a request to allow construction of a nine-foot-high entrance arbor and decorative yard lighting within the front yard setback of the property. Here is the project location. This is Merrill Avenue and Mountain Trail Avenue here. And this is East Laurel, as you can see here. So Baldwin would be further to the west. The lot size of the project is 19,158 square feet, zoned multifamily residential R3. In this case, the reason that this is before you is because a conditional use permit is required for all developments in the R3 zone. The existing site includes one unit at 2,021 square feet, and then a second unit, another unit, another residential unit, not to be confused with a second unit, to the rear of the property, and it's 297 square feet, and a two-car garage totaling 2,909 square feet. The total proposed area for unit two plus a new two-car garage that is attached is 4,095 square feet. For unit two, they would demo the existing unit two and construct a new 1,063-square-foot unit. And the existing two-car garage would remain in, in the rear, for a total of 5,558 square feet. The lot coverage proposed is 44%. The maximum allowed is 55. Parking is being proposed as required for four covered spaces plus two uncovered guest spaces. In more detail, unit one, they are proposing to add on to unit one, so the first floor would have an additional 765 square feet and 488 square feet to the second. And also a new 630-square-foot attached two-car garage. It involves also, as I mentioned previously, the demolition of 297-square-foot unit at the rear, and construction of a new unit. And also construction of the nine-foot-high trellis with hanging lighting and along the front property, and then some decorative lighting over the existing pilasters on each side of the driveway. Here is the existing, existing site plan with the existing unit one here. This is the driveway leading to the existing two-car garage with the attached 297-square-foot unit. The proposed site plan includes the additional area that you can see here at, at the rear. And this is, this would be the new unit two, which would then be detached from the existing garage, and the existing garage would remain. Here are the guest spaces. The applicant would be removing the existing circular driveway, and is proposing forest pavers along here, and, and some lawn area along here and, and here. Existing floor plans for first and second stories. And this is the existing unit two, the floor plan, so you can see the garage and the smaller unit here. First floor plan proposed with the additional area concentrated here toward the, the rear of the, of the unit. And then second story. And what you see down below here would be the roof of the new garage. And here you see the, the garage. Where the property slopes towards the, the back, that's where the garage would be located, and you will see that from the elevation. The proposed unit two and the existing garage. North elevation existing and proposed. And you can see here where the proposed trellis is, is located, would be located.
Where is that trellis located? I, I'm not, is it right along the front property, at the street?
It is, it is right along the front property line, yes. It would basically be, perhaps we can go back to the very first. This is, this is where that trellis is proposed, and there's an existing rock wall here. And they will be doing some repair to that wall, but basically maintaining it, and just proposing the trellis here with the lighting.
Where one of those chain link fences is now, in essence, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
So you can see here on this elevation, there's the additional area which is set back. You can't tell from here, because it's one-dimensional, but this would be further set back. South elevation, which is the rear, you can see here the garage, the, the new garage would be located at the rear, and there's some additional floor area here, as you can see in this area, as compared to the existing. Elevation on the west side, again, you can see the garage entrance faces west. And the additional area for the second story does not go over the new garage. It basically remains pretty much aligned with the existing. This is just an elevation that shows, again, west elevation, that shows basically the existing garage, the new unit two, and then the additional, the additional garage, and, and some of the square footage. The east side elevation. And then the elevations of the, the new unit two. You can see here, this would be the west, west elevation. This, I believe, is the This, I believe, is the east elevation. And this would be the south elevation. And then the north elevation, as you can see. Again, this is just a larger elevation of the proposed trellis. And there, this is the lighting fixture they're proposing for the trellis. Roof plans, existing roof plan, this is the existing for the unit one and this would be the proposed roof plan. This area, as you can see, the ridge, this is the existing ridge with some of the dormers here, as you can see. And the ridge would be basically changed here in this location to account for the additional square footage that is being proposed. And there are, of course, some changes as well here. The, the applicant is here and the applicant's designers here as well to answer any questions you might have regarding more technical questions you might have regarding the proposal. Landscaping plan, the lawn areas are restricted to these two areas here. This is where the trellis is being proposed. The applicant is proposing to maintain some of the trees that are on site and adding more trees to, to the site. This would be porous paving surface. And these deck areas would be concrete that drains out to a catch basin on the property that my understanding is the applicant would then recirculate that into a gray water system on the property.
Letitia, is this, is this all new landscape, so the lawns are not existing?
That is correct. Currently, there is a circular driveway here. There may have been some lawn in some of these areas, but it's probably dried up at this point and dead. The circular driveway would be removed. The applicant is proposing to remove the circular driveway. And just, all there is is now a pedestrian path from the street to, to the porch, the front porch of the house.
Do you think the two, two palm trees at the very back of the lot?
Yes.
Are pre-existing as, as, as well as the tree on the right?
That's right. That is correct.
Now, me to the west of this is the condo, right?
That is correct. The condominium, that large, there's a large white building, which is a condominium, yes.
How is the, how the trees are put in there lined up against that condo? I mean, is that, is there, is that the side of the building?
There's a walkway there.
There's a walkway between the walls.
Yeah, there's a distance, there is a distance between the condominiums and, yes, they're not right up against the property line, yes. So there's some room. The trash storage would be located here. I'm sure you saw that on the, on the elevation. I didn't mention it, but this is the required storage for the trash cans.
And the same pool would be repurposed?
That is correct. According to the applicant, they are changing the depth of the pool. Currently, apparently, it's twelve feet deep in the deepest area and they're actually filling it so that it's not as, as wide as it currently, as, as deep as it currently is. And of course, the findings that have to be made to approve the project. And this is for the CUP, of course, and this is for the minor CUP. You have to make findings for both applications. Regarding the, regarding the landscaping, of course, as I mentioned, the dining terrace and areas adjacent to it, in, in these areas here, they are, would be light washed, finished concrete with drains directing the runoff to a catch basin. And then walkways will be light washed, finished concrete as well bordered by porous pavers. The lighting, according to information provided by the applicant, all fixtures provide indirect lighting and will be shrouded for minimum glare. Lighting would use low voltage LED bulbs with the exception of two natural gas lamps located near the pool. And a condition of approval has been included in the resolution requiring that all the lighting in exterior of the building in landscaping and parking areas would be hooded and directed away from adjacent structures. And there are no protected trees on the subject property. Regarding the environmental determination, the project qualifies for an exemption, an exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The alternatives before you tonight are to approve the application for the conditional use permit and minor conditional use permit pursuant to the resolution that was included in your packet, deny the application for conditional use permit and minor conditional use permit, identifying the findings that you believe cannot be made for, for the project and the basis for rejecting those findings. And the third option is to continue the project and direct the applicant, provide the applicant with direction. The recommendation from staff is that the planning commission approve conditional use permit fourteen oh three and minor conditional use permit fourteen oh four pursuant to Resolution fourteen twelve, subject to conditions of approval. The applicant is here with their designer tonight, if you have any questions also, and I'm available for questions.
Letitia, can I, can you clarify one thing? In some of the plans here, it talked about the new garage as a three-car garage and then it says two-car attached garage. So is the six hundred and thirty foot square foot, is that the new garage, is that a three-car or two-car?
It is a two-car garage.
Will the utilities be underground?
Yes, they are required to underground the utilities according to the R three ordinance.
All, all utilities?
And the applicant wishes to do so.
Okay.
Yes.
Then another question I had, and I couldn't find this on the site plan. The, the distance between the proposed second unit and the proposed, the additions to the first, is it closer than twenty-five feet? I'm trying to figure that out and I, I didn't see anything on the site plan.
Looks to be about, maybe a little, yeah, maybe a little over twenty, twenty feet.
It looks to be, yes, pretty close. I'm not exactly sure.
How is that measured?
I know, I, I know I checked that and it, and it did comply with that condition, that it be...
How is it measured, though? Is it measured from the closest corner or whatever's directly behind?
Closest corner would be. Because that, that would be the closest part of the, of the building.
The covered porch corner would be the closest to the back of the garage, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
And that's more than twenty-five feet?
That, that does comply with that requirement, yes. It meets that requirement for placement of buildings and distances.
Letitia, the only question, I was over there, the project appears to be already under construction. Has, has anything been approved or is that just it?
The project is not under construction. They did install a temporary light pole and installed a fence, a protective fence, basically. But they, they have not started a project. They don't have any permits to do any, any work.
We know that certainly stopped people before in Sierra Madre.
Letitia, can you talk a little bit about the required parking? And, and was, because one of the questions I had was, with all the additions going on to the, the main house, it is, based on my calculation, five bedrooms? Require three-car parking or not?
Yes, the, the, the density at which this project is, which is less than eight units per acre, in the R three ordinance, it is not based on number of bedrooms.
Oh, okay.
There is just a straight requirement for the parking that they in fact are providing. So it's not based on how many bedrooms, as like R one is, it actually is just a, a, just a straight requirement.
Which is six, right?
Which is six, four covered and two uncovered. Correct.
Anything else for Letitia?
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have the applicant come to the podium here.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Frank Comenti. This is my wife, Mara. And what I heard in the previous presentation about developers and living in the city, well, I'm gonna say it too, but it actually is true. We, we have been wanting to live in Sierra Madre for a long time and we looked at many properties here and we actually started renting a house, which we're living in right now until we can get permission to go ahead with the remodel on this existing. So we do not plan on, on moving or turning it for a profit or anything like that. We are very proud to have a home like that. We want to keep the architectural integrity of, of the way it was originally designed and we're trying to keep that, or we are actually keeping that in the current design of the addition of the existing structure and in the proposed second unit. Any questions for me?
Yeah, when was the house originally built?
Nineteen sixteen.
Nineteen sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not a historical house, is it?
It's not on our, no, it's not on our public...
I didn't see it on the list, just, you could volunteer. That's all right.
At this time, we'll open it up to, yeah, a question, sorry.
Does the unit proposed qualify under the, for arena unit, granny flat, that kind of?
No, it would not. Simply because it's not a, by definition, a, a second unit. I mean, I know we keep referring second unit because it's another unit, but no, it would not.
Okay.
Did we, did we lose one because there was a granny house on there? No?
No, we didn't.
All right, at this time, anyone in the public who would like to comment on this project, please step on up.
Hey, Wade Bonds, one three Highland. I'm right south of the project and my neighbor as well. The only thing I was kind of concerned about is that it seems like it's gonna just double in size and all the houses on my street and the street next to me and even up on Laurel are like, you know, some of them are less than a thousand. They're all small houses. It's old Sierra Madre. And I'm, I'm not gonna say anything earth shaking here. I just went through the last, kind of listened in on the last thing and I just, you know, I was kind of concerned that the new, the house in the back, the granny house, which is two, the two hundred and ninety-seven square foot little structure, when they take that out and put the big one in, it's just gonna, it's just gonna be like massive to the point where I won't see the skyline anymore, which, you know, I mean, it's no big deal. But having grown up in this town, it kind of becomes a big deal 'cause I always liked looking up at the hills up there, kind of seeing what the weather's like. So me and my neighbor who lives right next door to me, he's not here, but he, he's not real fond of, you know, getting involved with the city, so I said I'll come and kind of check it out. So I'm just kind of doing this off the cuff. I wrote some notes, but I'm just, I, you know, it's like, having grown up in this town, I remember I'm working one of my buddy's dad who was a carpenter and it seemed like whenever somebody bought a house, they'd put an addition on. It'd be no big deal. But I'm kind of looking at this and it's like, you know, just, it just seems like it's a lot. But it's a big property. It's their property. It's none of my business. And, and on the plans here, I really don't see any elevation, so I can't, I can't even guesstimate how, you know, what, what I'm not gonna see anymore, but I wish him all the best. I'm a little curious about the moratorium I'm building. Does that mean that they're gonna be starting building right away? And, 'cause nobody's been in that little, little dinky granny house for three years, at least. And basically, that's it. I don't, I don't really have any complaints of, like, you know, these new neighbors, you know, I wish them the best. I just hope that it's not too big and I can still look up and see the Sierra Madre Mountains. To me, they're the Sierra Madre Mountains. And everybody else in the neighborhood obviously wishes them the best except for the fact that we all live in little, dinky, little houses compared to this one. And so it's, in one way, it's kind of sad because it seems like old school Sierra Madre is just going by the wayside. But what can I say, you know? That's it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hi, Barbara Lee Klein. I'm gonna question the nine-foot ha, high entrance that they're asking for. I know that we have an ordinance that says we're not supposed to go over a certain height. I don't know if it's four foot or six foot. I know in town, there's a couple of rock walls that have gone up that are extremely high. And I'm thinking, okay, we don't have a plan checker, so no one's there to tell them to knock it down. But I'm questioning, that's awfully high to have here as the entrance. And also, Danny, if you could explain why won't it be counted as a granny flat? Because are we then losing one that had the potential to be a granny flat? And if so, then why are we giving them the extra hundred and sixty-six square foot allowance? Thanks.
Well, I, I think after further thought, we, we can and I'll, we can look into that. But, 'cause we certainly would like to increase our arena so that in our reporting that the less number of units were assigned. So I will look into that. But I believe, I believe we can.
If that one hasn't been previously counted, then this would be the issue.
That's the issue and I, I don't...
Then this would be a small...
We, we didn't, I, I know we, in our last two housing elements, we did not count it.
So that would be good, if it, if it is that.
I'm Andrea Van Winkle. I live just to the west of this property. And as far as the size is concerned, this is next to the gigantic, I call it, three or four-story condos that went in before you changed your rules. And this house is, is not gonna be anything near that. And he's bringing some charm into our neighborhood. He's making, to me, it's a, it's a lift for all of us because it's gonna be a beautiful home and it's gonna be in Sierra Madre's tradition. And I, I can't see, the alternative was to put five units on there. And that would cause a lot more water and all of those things that we're trying not to do. So I hope you will approve this.
Leslie McCall, one twenty-five East Laurel. So I'm directly north of them. And I agree, I think the neighborhood, it would be greatly improved because they're, they're contributing to the integrity of the house. They're keeping the same style. And the second unit in back is not gonna be visible from the north side and I think it's a single, it's a single story, so it shouldn't have a great amount of impact. But we're all extremely happy that they're adding to the, the property and maintaining the architectural style. So we're all very, very happy. To my neighbor's point, we could have another gigantic condo right across the street. So we're extremely excited. So we hope you approve it as well. Thank you.
This is another neighbor. This is Alice. She's not gonna talk, but I'll talk.
My name is Liz DeCam. I live at one five two East Laurel. So it goes their property, then Andrea's property, and then my property. I'm on the corner of Merrill and Laurel. I don't know the rules about the box and the boxes. That was Gina's comment maybe a couple of months ago about how you guys, it's really simple, a box within a box. And I think if I've understood the presentation, this box fits within the box with plenty of room. But for myself personally, one of my heroes, two of my heroes in life, the Green and Green Brothers, okay? I've done every tour of the Gamble House except for one. Haven't made it to all of them. I missed one. The Green and Greens, if I could afford that house, that Green and Green house in Sierra Madre, I forget what street it's on, Toyon or whatever it's on, I would. But one point six million is a bit above my budget. I am extremely happy. I did, I've never met these folks. Didn't have the privilege to meet them until tonight and I consider it a privilege. I'm so pleased to see what's going on. You guys are the experts and I'm, I'm... You guys are the experts, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm glad that you're sitting in your chair, and I'm gonna go home in a few minutes. But from, from my perspective, as just someone who loves the Gamble House, loves arts and crafts, loves craftsmen houses, mine's green with, I painted my house green with, you know, the wine colored trim and brown trim, you know? My house, when it grows up, it wants to be their house. Okay? But obviously, that's not gonna happen, because my lot is smaller than what their house will be. But when I saw this tonight, I was very happy. As Andrea mentioned, you know, the condo building that's three or four stories tall that's next to them, doesn't seem to be in keeping. I, I'm so sorry for Wade, you know, if there's an issue with his view, because, you know, I'm to the east, and then this place will be, I guess, to the north of him, you know, I'm sorry if that affects his view, because I covet my view of the mountains, that's part of the reason why I ended up buying that place. But anyway, so I hope you approve it, because I, when I saw this, I was very happy. Again, I don't know all the details that you guys know about the box within a box, but from what I can see, I'm very happy. So I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Jan Grotteman. I live in those tall, white townhouses on the other side, so, and-
That's okay.
That's okay. We didn't build them. Anyway, we also all support this project from the condos. I represent the whole group, and we think what they're doing is very special and only helps our street, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission here to discuss. Who would like to start us off?
Well, I will.
All right.
Well, I'd like to applaud that they are remodeling what looks like a historic craftsman style house, instead of tearing it down and building something huge. I mean, it's, it's a good-sized lot, it's, it's the history of Sierra Madre, and so I really applaud the applicant for, for taking this effort. That's really all I could want to say right now.
Yeah, I'd like to applaud the applicant, too. I think the, they're, they're creating a large house, but the, when you look at the size of the lot, it is very doable, very manageable, and it's not going to be out of proportion with a lot. When you consider what could have gone there, on a lot that size, they could have put a small airport. And instead, they've shown great restraint in, in how they've developed it, so it's not too dense, and they've, the architectural style that they've continued from, on both houses is appropriate, and I think from the, the street, they've taken, they've taken advantage of the slope of the lot, so that they've masked a lot of, of what we would, what some of the bulk enassing, although the condos to the next, to that one side, you know, you're, you know, you're never gonna get anything bigger than that, so that by comparison, it's, it came out very well, so I applaud them on the, on the, on the project, and I'm, I'm happy with it.
I agree with that. I also sort of like the fact that the house is closer to the side where the big building is, so that it's not impacting quite as much the smaller house to the east as it might have done. And I also, I'm really happy that they're building a new, smaller unit in the back, because Sierra Madre needs more small units that are more affordable, and I think that's fabulous. And to me, it mitigates any issues there might be with the bigness of this house, to have one more usable, small unit in Sierra Madre. I'm really, really happy about that aspect of this project.
Not a lot to add, concur with everything it said. It's a beautiful project, and it's nice to see the community happy, it meets the findings. I'm good.
You know, what concerned me about this project was a letter from Mr. Bonds back there. I went, I've got a house where they, next door neighbor, built a little addition, a little granny flat, and it was a two-story monstrosity. They basically cut my view of the mountains off to the max, so I went down and I looked at it, and unfortunately, to me, this is certainly gonna cut some of his view, but it's not gonna be as detrimental as he might think. I did see that the one to the west is like, you can't see anything in the west, you know, with that big building, but hopefully, he's still got a little bit of view to the east, it's gonna look fine. I looked at the plans, and it looks like it's gonna be a beautiful home, and they're done with it. And we could always use more neighbors that come down and speak, and this is what should happen at planning commission, people with griefs come down and speak, and everybody talks, and it gets taken care of. So I can feel your concern, Mr. Bonds, but I think I'm gonna vote for this project.
Yeah, I find it interesting that in order to make this comply with the general plan, especially objective L-82, they actually had to increase the size of the single family or the second unit to a, to a minimum size, which I think it was, the only comment I would make is it was tastefully done, rather than just sort of chunking on something to what's already there, so that was well thought out as well. I can support it.
All right, I will close here and echo much of the same sentiment as fellow commissioners. I think this was, I applaud the designer, too, as far as putting the plans together, very clear, understandable.
Math works, too.
And the math checks out, so kudos to, to you for doing that. I think overall, it's well done, well conceived, tastefully done, it fits on the lot, and I think it hits all the points and the findings, so I, I couldn't find much to sort of poke holes in this scheme, so I think, well done. I support it.
I will propose that we approve PC resolution 1412.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we, Danny, do we need a motion for the minor?
What's the party?
No, you included the entire resolution.
All right, we have arrived at the point of the meeting for oral communication, so for the audience, this is an additional opportunity for any person to address the planning commission on anything that's not on tonight's agenda. When addressing the planning commission, begin by providing your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to more than four minutes.
No. More than four minutes?
No more than. Did I say more than?
Yes.
All right. Not seeing a rush to the podium, I will close audience comment and bring it back to comment for the planning commission on anything.
I asked about, some time ago, proposed that we look at the issue of when we review projects depending on four, over 4,000 feet, changing that, and when that's coming.
I believe that's September, October. September 18th is when we have, so it's coming up.
What are we doing with the general plan?
Oh, you should have been here last time, see? We went through the whole thing.
It's coming. We have September 4th meeting, the next meeting is, we have implementation, and we also have land use and water, land use section coming back to you regarding water, water policies, so.
Revisit that.
Yep. And we're currently working on implementation, that's gonna come to you soon as well.
Development services?
No, I was just gonna say, your next meeting is September 4th.
I'm sorry, I, I think I misspoke. I think the, the maximum square footage from 4,000 to 3,000, I think it's in October, actually. Yeah, I believe.
Yeah. And again, it's just a matter of what's on the agenda and things that are coming back, so. That's it for me.
All right. Well, I think we are done. That adjourns our meeting.